This was your idea. Tell me, tell me what you put together. It's a series of meetings, and this is the first one tonight.
Yes, the first one, and I really wanted to have a series of meetings where council would have the opportunity to hear from all the agencies across Anderson County, including, you know, our emergency services, our school districts, our utility providers, and even going as far as entertaining the idea of getting information on conservation of land and conservation easements and how the county can participate in that. And I really felt like that, you know, the decisions that we make on county council affect every life in Anderson County. They affect every agency in Anderson County. And I live by the mantra, you make great decisions with great information. And I felt this would be the opportunity, and as far as I know, it's the first time we've ever done it in a series of meetings, where county council gathers as much as we can, as far as information goes, to make great decisions for the citizens of Anderson County.
And tonight is the emergency and first responder account?
Right, right. The Anderson County Sheriff's Department, Anderson County Fire Commission, and Anderson County EMS. And since I've been on council, we've never really sat down with the fire commission, discussed what our growth path is. And we know our growth path because of the census that we all took and had, and we've got those numbers, and we know where we're going and where we're going to be population-wise in 10 years. And how do we prepare for that as we look forward into the 2026 comp plan? And how do we make the best decisions we can make?
I want to thank each person for being here. This is the first of a series of meetings. And first of all, I'd like to explain how this idea came about, was I felt like that with our upcoming plan of our comprehensive land use plan that we have due in 2026, that we need as much information as county council representatives to make the best decisions that we can possibly make for the citizens of Anderson County. I have felt that the decisions that we make as county council representatives, all seven of us, have an impact and effect on each life in Anderson County, each citizen, young and old, and each agency that we work with in Anderson County. Some are county agencies, like we'll hear from tonight, others down the road. We're going to be inviting all the school districts to come in, all five school districts to come in and talk to us about their plans for growth. We're going to talk to utility providers, including sewer authorities. We have a lot of sewer authorities in Anderson County, not just Anderson County Sewer. In, you know, especially in my district, we have Rewind. So we're going to be talking with those folks and the utility companies as far as power. And everybody's going to have an opportunity to come and share with us the information they have. We have our growth projections from the census, and we know where we're going population-wise, and we know that we're going to continue to grow. And that has, you know, struggles along with it, and how do we grow in the smartest way we can grow. So we, as county council, want to make sure that the decisions we make, especially within development standards, within planning and public works, that we make decisions that are helpful and not harmful. And so, I've been on council over six years, and we've never undertook anything like this. I've been on council, like I say, I'm in, I'm just started my fourth term, and we've never sat down with the fire commission, ever since I've been on council. Now, each other individually council people have, but we, as a group, have not sat down with each other. And I felt it important that we sit down with these agencies and find out, you know, get this, share information back. And I wanted to publicly be a part of that. So this is not, like I say, the night's the first night. I'm hoping Administrator Burns has been gracious enough to help me in organizing these meetings, and we're hopefully going to have one concerning conservation. How do we conserve land in Anderson County? The governor spoke about this in his State of the State address, and we've seen great strides within the state for conservation of land across the state, and Anderson County needs to be a part of that. How do we conserve land? And how do we make it possible for landowners to conserve land? And so, those are just some ideas that we have going forward. Tonight, I promise we won't, we don't, we won't be here very long. This, this will be a, you know, an information session between these three agencies. And at the end, if you have some comments, I would ask that if you have something very specific, address it with the agency afterwards. This is not meant to be a complaint session. This is meant to be an informational gathering session. So I thank you for attendance. So we're going to start off tonight with the Anderson County Fire Commission, and I think the commissioners and the chiefs from being here, and if y'all, if y'all want to come on up and...
Y'all can come up here, I don't... All right, I'm Tommy Keaton. I'm commissioner from School District One. Mr. Murk is from the commissioner from District Five. Mr. Dickerson is from District Three, and Mr. Andrew Wilson from District Four. Mr. Branding, who represents District Two, could be with us tonight. But like I said, appreciate y'all bringing us out. And this being on you to us, we were told, you know, kind of what we see is our future needs going forward. One thing that we do on providing fire protection is, this may not be where it is, ISO school. If you haven't heard of ISO school, affects the insurance rate, homeowners insurance, that kind of thing. Currently, we have a three slash three by rating, which is a really good rating, considering all our firefighters are volunteer. And just for information purposes, the county is comprised of 27 volunteer fire stations. The towns, incorporate the towns, they have their own, but out of county, it's 27 volunteer fire stations. We do have a paid staff here in Anderson. We have a chief and his staff that, we have fire marshals that take care of inspections, mechanics that keep trucks rolling. We've got two full-time investigators that investigate cause of injury and fire. And we've got a training officer and that sort of thing. But we got, we got that much of a paid staff, but that's not a firefight staff. Firefighters are volunteers. Recently, to kind of upgrade things, we made a purchase to try to upgrade some of the trucks. Some of them we had were 30 years old, some a little more than 30 years old. And we entered to, we developed a capital improvement layout plan there, where we purchased, this first batch was 18 trucks came into the county, and they're scattered out all over the county right now. We've got nine more, nine more that are, will be delivered within the next couple of years. And every, this first, this first wave, we got is where every first out truck in this county is 10 years old or less. So it's pretty complex. Going forward, we see that we're going to have to do, we're going to have to replace our radio program, our radio system, or upgrade it at least. I've been involved with fire services in this county for more than I care to remember, and radios have always been a issue. And we have, we've been working with that, doing studies, they've been studies done, and it's, I don't know why it's such a problem in this county, they're these. That's going to be a big expenditure within the next few years that we're going to have to take care of, because it's not just the system. If you think about it, those 27 fire stations we have, like 100 feet and plus volunteer firefighters. So you have to upgrade pagers, radios, all that. So it's a really big undertaking. That's going, that's going to cause some issues. Call volume over the past, I had Chief Freeman here to pull some numbers, just give you some numbers. Since the beginning of 2020, I think the calls have increased over, until the end of 2024, it's like 2,000, a little 2,000 more calls than what we had in 2020. So yes, the growth causes us, you know, we got to respond more. Biggest part, that's the biggest, I don't think anybody knows I drive anymore. We constantly run rent calls, but we've also undertaken, we just rewrote our dispatch protocol calls, on what we get dispatched to, because there's some calls, I won't say that are unnecessary, but they didn't necessarily need fire department out there, right? But we get caught to it. And I'll give you an example, there's a fender bender in Walmart parking lot, out of the wheel. Somebody calls for a fire truck. We don't need to respond to that. That's wasting your money, going to that. So we've worked on those, tweaking those. We're still in the process of getting it all hammered out, but we're hoping that eliminates some of the call volume and get it thinned down for us. And then, and it's not just Anderson County, this is across the country. You're starting to see a decline in volunteers. And if you just think about today's society, mom and dad working, kids playing ball, whatever, the amount of training that you have to go through is just taxing on family. So at some point, we're going to have to look into, we may not be able to run this all with volunteers. Now, that's out there a little bit. I mean, we're looking at, looking at options and seeing what's the best thing, but it's coming. Or do we like it or not, it's coming. Anything else else you can think of next few years? Anything to talk about? So I think that's the big take. Does y'all have any thoughts?
First of all, thank you for our volunteer firefighters. I didn't know where this county would be without you. Question though, has there been a comparison of backup provision from the city of Anderson in relation to backup provision from our volunteer fire departments? Because I'm hearing like the annexed stuff that they've been doing, the layout of those developments is really bad, and it's going to be very difficult to serve fire service. Built up on high banks and narrow streets and not much room between. And we were hearing that the city of Anderson was planning to impose on our volunteer fire departments backup wise, because they don't think they can manage.
I don't know that I would use, where they posed, but we, we had mutual aid agreements with the city, the towns. If, I mean, on any call right now, if they, they need assistance, they call us to go back. We do the same with them. We, the areas that's close to the city, if we get something we can step on, we'll call in with their closest station. But I'm sure whatever the annex, I'm sure that there'll be a mutual aid agreement that covers whatever the budget goes there. But as of this point, nobody's come to us with anything about that.
I was going to say, Ms. Wilson, as far as, we order the city of Elton. So if our, we have set up, as all of us were, Elton will come and assist us. And anything within the city of structured fire, they've got all, was it three stations? Shetter, Friendship, and Rock Springs are all coming into the city for a structured fire. But they are divided up to come assist us. And I would assume that's what the city would do. I know they don't, you know, support a structured fire, but if they needed assistance, there would be zones set up that we would come assist, whatever department's place.
Well, I'm sure there are memorandums of understanding to assist, but I was curious about the city of Anderson. I know all of the other small municipalities, how it's worked.
We have mutual aid agreements with the city. And I mean, if you get, you can get into the municipal subjects, you've got mutual aid, you've got almighty aid, that kind of thing. Right now, we have mutual aid agreements with the city. Anything else they call, we need that there. And what we do is send the closest station to whatever side of town it is.
And I want to thank all the commissioners for, for your service. I want to thank Councilman Eldon, he's assistant chief down at Rock Springs. And I want to thank you all for your service and performance. I mean, the big question is, we know growth is still coming, and across the county, in some areas more than others. And, you know, the big question is, I'm going to be asking this of everyone, is what can we do to help you? How can we work together? And how, how can we be mindful of your, your constraints that you may see coming down the road? How can we be mindful of that? And whether it's just better, whether it's communication or in other areas, how can we, as county council, help you where you may see that, you know, with the growth that's coming, that you may have some problems?
I think just have the seat in favor, just to help us in our future planning, to help in the negotiations of the things that we mentioned before about building subsidies and having them with access. I have to say, in some of those pieces, being mindful of, as we bring more subsidies, more growth, more development into the county, that it is associated properly on impact things and all those things that do have a taxing, or taxing on our systems, that we're all accountable for, and we all have to sit in favor to express those concerns, talk about those concerns, and be able to take them back to our organizations and be able to build our organization properly and handle those types of problems. I think that's important.
And I think it's important to note that most, that most of the general public, I did, I did not have a clue, even though my dad was a volunteer fire department for many years and served on the board at RIN, I didn't have a clue until Mr. Keaton educated me in the, in the ways of the, of how the volunteer fire department works. And the, and the, some of the, some of the challenges they go through is some of the state requirements on when tires have to be changed, when trucks have to be changed, and, and when turnout gear has to be provided, and new turnout gear. And so they, they face a lot of financial and economic challenges, just from a simple point of age of equipment. And so, when you hear they have needs, it's not that they're just out frivolously spending their money. They truly have a need. And again, our volunteer fire department does an awesome, awesome job. And they're out risking their lives for us. And I want to do everything I can, from the position that I sit, to help you out. I appreciate that. And I tell you, we just like a young industry. We've got awesome regulations, we've got federal regulations we have to meet of the tires, we're talking about the tires. We can have a fire truck out there that don't have 20,000 miles on it, because they don't run, you know, up down the road all the time. But them tires have to be seven years old or less. And I personally, I take the tires off the truck that had less than 10,000 miles on it, and everybody's sitting. I mean, it's just mandated. It's law, it's law.
And the other thing is, if you put fire on anything, whether it's gloves, whatever price triggers.
Absolutely. Gloves, axes, and, and those challenges, we work on those on a regular basis. And we, we provide to these stations as much help as we can, get them what they need. Number one, we're going to be compliant. We're going to have what we're supposed to have. And we're going to put them in the best that we can put them in. We, like I said, these trucks we just purchased, they helped me out, a piece of this truck cost, yeah, a little over $600. It wasn't that many years ago. We could buy, we could buy three trucks for a little over $8,000, you pay the house. It's just one outside. And since we purchased those, because of more EPA regulations, that same truck is going to cost us somewhere between $80,000 to $100,000 from over, because of EPA regulations it's going to put on. So it's, it's a struggle. I mean, it really is a struggle. I'm proud of this organization. I'm proud of these. You can get the thing, but I think the number, Joey, you remember my number one was for last year? About 27,000 calls the volunteers answered. Think about that. That's, that's a lot. So always type the numbers like you get the money's worth. And like I said, anything we can do to help you, just let us know. We ride over here at 210 D Road, right across from UBS. Sir, Head Of War's got a chief and his staff there. Anything we can do to help him come by there, gets called. All these commissioners, their numbers are published on, on the website. We'd be glad to.
I appreciate everything y'all do for us. Also, Mr. Dick, as far as what you said, I, I think that, just like we did with the other thing we thought we had coming, I believe sitting down with y'all, whether it's in a public meeting or whatever, y'all, we, we should let y'all know what's coming and what to look for. I think the big thing is just planning. You know, if something's coming, we want everybody to know. Just like we talked about before, will we go? Yeah, we're going to go, and we're going to try to handle it. But we'd like to know what we're stepping into and what, what we can do better to help the fire EMS change pump out before it gets there and get input. Not, not that we can change everything, but, you know, having a, having a step ahead so we can kind of let y'all know, and y'all look at stuff too, but I think it's great.
Yes, ma'am.
How are the contributions coming in from these newer developments with people that've moved in? Do they have a clue that y'all are all volunteers, and that's not included in much of their tax money?
I really, I really can't speak to any other place, but I know in the, up in the upper end, the county 320 area, when I was the chief there, yes, we, we got great donations from our folks. Now, some of the other areas and the other districts, I couldn't tell you, you know, because, to be honest with you, when it comes to their donations, that's, that's the station thing. That's, they're all set up on their own, 501(c)(30), that's on the damn. The tax money, we distribute that out legally to each station each year. But I, I can't say I've heard anybody really complain about their donations going down at all, you know?
I think some are better than others.
Yeah, some are better than others, and it depends on where you're at. I cannot get a feeling. But it's, people's good at the fire department.
Couple of thoughts I had, Commissioner Keaton. First of all, does the, does the fire commission and county staff, do y'all get the county council and the planning commission packets emailed to you so that you know what's coming before the planning commission?
I don't feel that they emailed to me. I go on and look, but...
I think that would be important. I mean, we could automatically have those sent to the commissioners. And if you can get me those email addresses, I'll make sure all the commissioners and the chief, the staff would be set up on that. Because I think it's important that you know what the planning commission's hearing in their upcoming hearings. I mean, you get, I mean, you can breathe through them pretty quick. You know which difference you represent and, and see some of that. And I think it'd be better, it'd be easier on you if you automatically got that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Secondly, you know, we do a lot of economic development in this county, and Anderson County's been unbelievably fortunate. Some of the, some of the companies that want to come and do business here. And while we have to be, you know, confidential and careful with information for quite some time, Mr. Burns, how can we better include them when somebody's coming into a certain district? I'm thinking out loud here, how can we help you know when, when we legally can let them know, hey, this is coming and...
Put everybody's supplies, services around the table, and let them meet the company, come and meet them, make sure that happens.
I think that would be a...
That's fine. By that means we're going to get in y'all loop on both.
And we've been understanding.
But we want to help you with it, and sign time and focus.
Well, here's another thing, that I was just, Mr. Keaton also works for Duke Energy, if you know, just anybody else.
But, you know, the ways we can help you know what's coming down the road, as soon as, as soon as we legally can, would be a great help. And also, I mean, one of the, you know, you mentioned ISO ratings, and ISO ratings, until I met Tommy Keaton, I didn't have a clue about what an ISO rating was. But I know, I know now how important it is to each individual property owner. And, and we, that's one of our goals, was just to make, to help you either make that, keep it where it's at or improve it. And I think there's ways that we can work together to, to make that hap, make that happen. Another thing I was thinking about with all the growth that we've had, there are so many people that were not born in Anderson County, they're living here. Maybe we can use some of our, our social media or media people to help people understand just how the volunteer fire system works, so that the average citizen can be educated on how it works and why it's important. When that, when that envelope comes in the mail, yeah, they need money because, you know, that, when we, when y'all had that referendum, I was all for it, and would be all for it again. I mean, if our system didn't have a, have a mileage increase in 30, well, I think 36 years. So it was important that you got, and we see how financially frugal you are. We see how you budget, and, and I appreciate that. And so, maybe if, if y'all are interested, maybe we could help you with, with getting some information out through the county's social media site.
You know, one, one correlation is a good ISO rating translates to lower payments insurance. And that's important for us to let folks know.
Really important. You leave us a couple of points on ISO store, homeowners insurance jumps.
Thousands and thousands.
And we have been, we have been very blessed with how we done the equipment, manpower, all that. Because there's so much that goes into that. So much of our hands, such as hydro locations, we don't have anything to do with that. The water companies do. But you store it on water, you store it on the radio system, you store it on manpower. It's a lot of different things go into it. But we have one of the best in the state as far as, but I started saying as far as volunteers, we, we deal with a lot of career departments.
Your, your local chief and his, or assistant chief or commissioner are always welcome for that discussion. Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Let us know if you can do anything for you. Next would be Mr. Steve Kelly from Anderson County Emergency Medical Services and...
Hold on, plant's got turn yet. I'm going to do a little PowerPoint presentation here. It should be fairly quick to kind of walk you through some of the information that I've got. Here in Anderson County, we operate what's called a tier 911 system. It's the only truly tier 911 system in South Carolina right now. That is using a basic last four handles, and then a perimeter TRB to respond to 911 calls. We do use EMS for our law enforcement and the 911 center to respond to the pre-hospital 911 calls that we get. And it seems to work really, really well for us. In April of '23, we were awarded the South Carolina Large EMS Assistant of the Year. And they actually, they came in, they dug through everything and... Year and they actually, they came in, they dug through everything and we're, we're very, very happy with the way we're doing it here. Uh, currently the EMS system is operating thirteen twenty-four hour paramedic QRVs that are spaced amongst the county and I've got a map. I'll show you in a second on that. And then they have one twenty-four hour operations kept that kind of oversees them. Uh, Metro Ambulance Service is a contracted and provided for the county right now. Normally depending on the time of day, they're running fourteen to seventeen twenty-four hour ambulances. During the day, they have the ability, with their non-emergent trucks, if they're not on calls, to bump that capacity up to twenty-one if it was needed to. Uh, we track our call volume by the areas that originated in it. We used to use the, the old risk squad areas, but now we kind of more track it along the, the fire department districts, but makes it smaller for us a little bit easier to track and we can identify problem areas before it really is a good problem. Response times, we, we tracking is what we call party one and party two nine-one-one requests. Party one is when they respond out with lights and sirens. Uh, party two is when they respond with no lights and no sirens. That's a lot smaller than it was supposed to be, but that's our printout since inception of what the QRVs responded to and then what the ambulance has responded to. We just kind of keep a, a run and tally of that so we can get a quick glance, see where our ebbs and flows are, the call volumes still lie out. And it's really, looking at the last three years, we truly have a really seasonal nine-one-one system around here. Winter gets a little slower, summer gets a little bit busy. The other way we break this down is this is a breakdown of all of our quick response vehicles. Currently they're numbered by the fire district they stay in. Example like ALS four stays starved, so it makes it easier for us to track on fly, like that kind of stuff. At the end of every month, we try to identify trucks that are seeing the call volume that we won't see, exceed how many calls they're running in twenty-four hour period. And those are kind of what we call problem children. We kind of keep an eye on them to make sure that, that area is not getting overloaded. If it gets overloaded, we need to start looking at moving resources around and putting more stuff in there. This currently is the placement of all the quick response vehicles that are in Anderson County on twenty-four hour shifts. That would be the, the hard stations for the ambulances, the way they're situated around the county. Anderson City has more than just those three sitting right there, but that's just the rough presentation on it.
Steve, does the city, we, we service the city as well, correct?
Yes. But with that being there, those are not municipal. They, more individuals stay right in there.
And we serve, and Mr. Elgin just confirmed, we serve all the municipalities.
Correct.
Anderson County.
Yes.
Okay.
We actually got with Ken Wildes the other day and he was able to take all of our response data.
Can you get to my phone?
Yeah, sorry. We went, we get Ken Wildes the other day and he was able to take all of response data uploaded and do the E maps and they really turned out good. So once we get those in digital copy, we'll shoot them to y'all.
Okay.
So you can kind of see where everything's growing and where we got split placed at. Uh, one of the new programs that we added this year was a, we're just simply calling a training patient control. It's a partnership with another county division of safety and risk management. It's basically, we identify some areas where Anderson County's employees were needed certain, certain specialized trains and stuff of the nature of vaccination, stuff like that. That's, that's her job now is to go in and teach classes such as the CPRA, they stop the believe and veterans control, active shooter. And we've actually had a lot of interest in her weather related classes such as the heat and cold emergencies. Basically teaching divisions like road bridges that they're out doing their daily jobs and some that doesn't go bad, how to take care of yourself to help this area. And it seems to be working really good. Uh, right now our stations, we currently try to base our QRVs with existing fire departments if they have room. That works out really good for us. Some areas we're not able to do that, just the way with the call volumes laid out in that area. So we kind of have to do standalone EMS stations. ALS nineteen is at TTI. ALS seventeen, we had to get a, put placement grid off a hatchboard grid, which is our little EMS station there. But other than that, we do try to go to the fire departments. We have, we do acknowledge that, but in the future that we may end up having to establish hard stations. So that's one thing we're gonna try to, kind of start looking into. Because really our only hard station we have are announced headquarters downtown, but there probably going to be the, in the future, we need to do something towards loading it in. Our basic plan now, two-year vibe is we're planning on continue the current EMS op, EMS model that we're operating. Every month we evaluate our nine-one-one response times for both party ones and the party twos. We're gonna continue to do that. It was a little bit slow, but we're getting ready to roll out now. There's a little customer satisfaction surveys. Anybody that's transported, they're given a card or a QR code on it so that they can get their input back on it. The growth of current facilities, our downtown station, we pretty much maxed it out. So that's one thing we might have to address in the next five years or so. Employee retention, we want to pay a good bit of attention to it. We do provide them with the, the best work environment we can, the best equipment. And payroll, we're probably just below average to some of the other surrounding counties. So that's something we'll keep an eye on.
And just to clarify to people here, the paramedics, for the most part, there are some that don't work for Anderson County. For the most part, all the paramedics in the QRVs are county employees.
Correct.
The, the EMTs and the ambulances for the transport, for the most part, are not county employees. They're MedShore employees.
Correct.
Also, Steve, I guess let them know that we have several ALS units that work with MedShore in addition to ours that stay in the city, correct?
Yes, MedShore on top of our quick response vehicles that we operate, they operate two. One is located in Centerville District and one is located downtown Anderson.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next five years, I guess really biggest changes we're looking at making is probably going to be the addition of one QRV to the system and one transport ambulance. I believe that those within the next five years should keep it covered fairly well.
Okay.
Uh, other than the way everything's increasing right now, budgetary wise, everything probably increased four or five percent. Now, the biggest hit that we took is our payroll and our equipment. For example, the cardiac monitor, we bought two cardiac monitors year before last, thirty-nine thousand dollars each. And this year they went up to sixty-four thousand dollars each. And those are the sole source items that cannot be bought from one place. So they kind of got you on anything. But in order to do the job that we did, we got that. Top of the fourth, uh, next ten years, we're probably looking at two QRVs being placed and then two to three additional transports. And those would have to be determined, possible to call area, this continuing to grow up. We're thinking that it will be your district. There's one of the big heavy hitters there, Sandy Springs is getting unloaded towels. Those are our figures we're watching.
Steve, but our contract made sure we got a couple of years left on there, correct?
I believe we have one full year and then the council reserves the ability to do a one or two year.
Extension, I think. Okay. How much, you, you mentioned equipment, I mean, with, and, and it's not just inflation, it's everything in life. So you, I mean, as far as equipment, you mentioned the cardiac monitor. Is there other equipment and supplies that, are they going up as much or?
Almost all of that supplies have almost completely doubled in price. Yeah, we've been able to absorb a lot of that stuff, but the big hits are like the cardiac monitor and stuff like that. For example, normal saline that similar heavy bags was made in a factory in North Carolina that was wiped out by COVID. So that's, that kind of stuff's been on the back door in majorly high demand since that happened. A normal case it would cost a hundred and twenty dollars, it's probably four or five hundred dollars now. And that stuff, we go to choose the cases that.
I asked you the same question I asked our, 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 our fire commissioners. What could we, I mean, of course, you're, you're a county employee and, and we talk, I mean, we go through budget cycles, but are there things that we can be working towards as you now see the growth path that we're on that we need to be looking for?
We enjoy the, the chance to speak to you about it. Uh, it, it allows us to talk it out of monster sales at office than we talk it out with you here and come up with solutions to our issues together. Some stuff we may have completely overlooked. But even with us working together, it, it seems like it's needed to take care of.
Just want to say thank you. Having had call EMS a few times in the last twenty-five, thirty years, our service here is excellent. So I appreciate it. I don't hear concerns from constituents now like I did, oh gosh, maybe three years ago that we're not getting the coverage in the outer areas. So I thank y'all for addressing that. How does the Williamson Station with MedShore, is that considered a hard unit place for y'all too with QRVs?
That is not for us. We do not keep the QRV there. They do keep one ambulance there twenty-four hours a day and I think they keep another two there when they're out of service, if you know what I mean.
How, how, how are we looking at, you know, we, we've heard many times that there's a national shortage of, of EMS workers, paramedics and, and EMTs both. How, how do we address it? How do we look forward down the road to, to, to help ourselves better on that? Is it just pay or is it, is it a culture at work? I mean, I mean, I know we, you can't work, you can't work everybody eighty hours a week and expect them to have a happy home life. So how, how, how is the outlook looking? Has it changed any and how do we help you get?
Permanent situation is going to get worse and get a lot worse because some of the major hitters that were doing the permanent programs such as the Rimmel Tech have killed them. They've decided not to do it long. So instead of.
Does tri-county tech still have a paramedic program?
Yes, but they may be putting out eight to ten paramedics every two years.
Wow.
So the only way that you can, we, we do have a, I think the culture that we've got set up for our paramedics is very desirable. The only other thing that I believe we have to keep an eye on is pay.
How does our pay rank amongst our, our neighboring counties?
A lot of the neighboring counties in order to combat the permanent shortage, both their face goods that grew. I don't see us being able to do that sort of stuff anytime soon, but again, like getting a, about a different working microphone that is a lot more user friendly, a lot less stressful. So that's kind of helped even itself out some.
Does scholarship program help with getting people through those programs and, and to the workforce?
A lot of the programs, those paramedics already use them, scholarships give them. There is a deal with.
And I want to thank Mr. Elgin here. He's the chair of our Public Safety Committee and it does a fantastic job and I want to thank him for his, and he and his committee for doing, for the service that they do and, and thank you for all you do. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it, Steve.
I just want to first start off by telling y'all thank you, the rest of the council thank you. I've been the chief deputy, this is going on my fifth year and I felt extremely supported by our council. Most of the needs we, we come to you with, we try to come to with needs not wants and we try to clearly articulate why we need things and y'all have done a really, really good job funding those needs when you can. Over the last few years, we implemented a body cam program, which we've never had in the history of the office. We've updated all of our tasers. The fleet is in excellent shape thanks to, to Mr. Joseph Stone. I'd encourage you to have a conversation with him as well. That is, plenty of men's staff. We have several hundred vehicles just to keep things to the best of his ability with the funding that he has allowed. Just the status of the office, I'm kind of happy to report that we're fully staffed, which is incredible when you look around at surrounding agencies, neighboring agencies very close to us. Our uniform patrol staff are fully staffed with, we actually have a waiting list of, of applicants that we continue to vet. So we have them in a pool and so we can call them. We do have opens. Over the last couple of weeks, we've enjoyed that and the only opens we actually do have in the office are higher elevated positions such as maybe we have open now in our criminal investigations division. Obviously that'll cycle down to your uniform patrol officer. So we'll have, as those, as those promotions are made, we'll have, we already have a pool of applicants that are on standby to, to bring them in now. Most people understand when we bring somebody in, it's normally six to eight to nine to ten months depending on the candidate unless we hire another certified deputy from another agency. We send, we have an academy here within our agency that we send them to. We then send them to the criminal justice academy and have to come back, have to do twelve weeks of field training before they're eligible to work by themselves. So with the day we hire a deputy, usually it's almost a year by the time that deputy's a functioning correspondent. We set up, at least we now have twenty-five deputies on uniform patrol or beach. We've set up, we have ten beaks within the county. Those beaks are set up due to, in relation to call volume. So it's not necessarily by size, it's the busyness of the beak. So our, if you look at our beak map, the smaller beaks, the smaller land sized beaks are the busier beaks. And then you get out towards, you know, the belt and honey path area, those, those geographical areas expand. We still have the same number of deputies. We tried to put two deputies per beak. We're able to do that right now. Again, because we're fully staffed. We average, I just pulled up the numbers. About February, we have to answer. Ten thousand calls for service. The daily average was three hundred and thirty-three calls per day. We arrested six hundred and twenty-four people in the month of February, responded to eighty domestic incidents. The average daily population of our detention center was four hundred and fifty-eight people. As you know, we're, if you rode by there, we're in the middle of building a new detention facility with way more capacity. Our communication center is extremely busy. They answer thirty-four thousand calls for service, incident dispatch center in the month, but the average daily call volume of, of twelve hundred and eighteen calls. So when I have the opportunity to speak in the community, most people don't understand. I see a couple of people shaking their head. Most people don't understand how busy this county is. It's a large county. It's eight hundred square miles. The population of the house, I think around two hundred and sixteen thousand residents, not, not vehicles that are out during the day. So most people don't understand how busy our deputies are. You answer three hundred and thirty-three calls in a twenty-four hour period. It's extremely busy. But I hope to see them riding around. Most of the time, you know, we, sometimes we get complained on them because we drive by, it's a train of motors or something like that. We try to stop when we can. Most people don't understand, running that many calls per day, we're normally going from a place to another place. So I have some staff that give us the ability to do more patrol operations, not just responding to calls. So that's kind of the. So that's kind of the, the status of the office now, uh, is kind of how it sits. Uh, I put together this little slideshow here, kind of looking, uh, the command staff just got together actually last month and, and we tried to do some strategic planning, um, looking at the next few years, home out to the next ten years. We utilize strategic planning judges outline capabilities and needs in order to provide professional operational services to the citizens of Anderson County. We broke those needs down in the short term, what we call immediate needs, um, three to five year, which is kind of turned to intermediate, and five to ten years, which will be long term. Now this isn't everything, this is just what I, you know, tried to put together to make the most sense. One immediate issue we have right now in our dispatch center is with Central Square. It is, and, uh, Mr. Elgin knows that. We, uh, if you don't know the county, when I think countywide, both, um, public administration and public safety with the central square software suite. It works well with our poor management system as well as our jail, uh, operations, I think it's fine, for whatever reason, in that dispatch center. Uh, the software and the, the hardware just aren't communicating and just causing crashes and, uh, interruptions to service. Uh, we're currently in dialogue with Central Square trying to get those fixed, um, depending on what day of the week that you talk to, it depends on, if that's on a good path or not, so I won't speak too much on that. Uh, obviously that's kind of outside my base of knowledge, so, um, our, our IT folks are involved, so.
Yeah, that's a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember specifics, but it seems like we paid a lot of money and did a lot of research on that system. What recourse do we have?
I know that we are engaging with our county attorneys, uh, looking at some options, uh, I know that we have formally noticed and we're not happy with the product, they're trying to remedy that. Um, from what I understand, uh, Central Square itself is a sort of an umbrella company, they go around and buy other companies up. Um, and so I think they bought the, 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 the software suite that they bought for what they call CAD or computer dispatch, uh, just doesn't suit our needs. Uh, we thought that it would, I think we were, we were, again, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think it, it doesn't do what we needed to do, and I think we thought it would do what it needed to do when we got it.
Yeah, no, I'll say real quick, I know we're, we are speaking with the attorney and looking at all that, and if, if they can't remedy it, then we'll, we'll just have to go into other means if we need to, so. But we're, we're working with the tribe, but again, time is essence, we don't want to put our public safety in, in danger, um, trying to prolong things that we don't need to. So that's, that's what everybody's trying to work against.
Yeah, it's, it's, it interrupts service, and it's a good thing we got some, we got some really good people out there, they're able to walk around on the fly, but, uh, they shouldn't be put in that position. Especially, again, like you said, we'll be paying for a product. Another program we're looking at, uh, I, I was able to attend the FBI's National Academy in two thousand and twenty-two, this was a big topic of conversation there. Um, since we've come, since I've came back from there and, uh, talking with some of our command staff, uh, as well as talking with other agencies in the state and region. One thing we're trying to embrace in our agency, which in law enforcement, you historically have, have not, is, is wellness program. We want to pour in, uh, and put some resources towards the mental and physical wellness of our employees. Uh, we have physical standards in the office, uh, we've tried to enhance those and encourage people to, uh, to adhere to this one. Uh, but the mental wellness side of it, the, uh, the PTSDs, the, uh, just general mental health of our employees, um, we think that goes towards retention. Um, I think a well, healthy employee is a good employee, is a good long-term employee. So, uh, we've kind of established a program of, with the resources that we have now, we really would like to expand that program over time. Uh, Greenble County, uh, started a wellness program about three years ago, uh, when they hired a, actually contracted with a clinician X number of hours per week, uh, that the employees had access to. And it was so successful that they were forced, essentially forced to hire a clinician on staff, and that clinician's foot stays full every single week. Um, he had to come on staff with him because he didn't have time to do his normal business because he was, he was working in excess of the hours that he allotted in the county because the deputies embraced it. Um, they have a requirement where they have to see him at least once a year, uh, SLED now has a requirement where they have to see a wellness coordinator or a mental health clinician once a year. Uh, so we'd really like to try to get into that and encourage that with our employees. Part of that would be, it, it's being serviced right now by our training unit, uh, we'd like to move that out of the training, uh, division and into its own office of professional standards. CLIA unit, CLIA is our national accreditation, so we're a nationally and state accredited agency. CLIA is the actual organization that, that, that serves, services our accreditation. Uh, we were just approved for accreditation, again, they do it every other year, uh, so we're nationally accredited, uh, which provides us opportunities for federal grants and other, other things, as well as liability protection, um, just in general operations. Uh, we'd like to move that unit into coordinating unit under one, uh, office of professional standards, so with a focus on wellness. We do have, uh, we have moved the position that we had, uh, in-house. This, this is our wellness coordinator, now she's not a clinician, she coordinates, um, the connection between deputies and clinicians that we can, we can contract with just on a half-hour basis. But we would really like to expand that as well. Staffing, so, uh, I feel like, um, that we're fairly well-staffed for what we have now. These are some, these are some needs that we have outside of just normal patrol operations. Uh, our traffic safety unit, and we have two deputies currently, um, that's, that service that as well as the county, the council can tell you, they hear it from their constituents every day too. Um, and not to throw any other, uh, state agencies under the bus, Mr. Elgin, but, um, the highway patrols has its own issues, uh, with, with a bunch of things. But, um, I have found in my experiences that they are responding to wrecks, essentially, they don't have enough people to work proactive enforcement. And, and they spend their day normally working on from wreck to wreck, and, and we have been able to, with our two traffic safety deputies, we've been able to service the complaints from the county. To the ability that we can with the two that we have now, but we're not in the ticket riding business, what we try to tell people is we're, we're trying to change the manner of driving. Uh, we work a lot of neighborhoods, a lot of school zones, that sort of thing, we're not really out on the interstate, we do have a, a drug and addiction units out there full-time, but, uh, these two guys are not looking for drugs for the most part, if they come across and they find them. But what they're really trying to do is, is, is increase the safety of the motor in the public. So, uh, we'd really like to expand that unit with a couple more deputies, um, I think we would, those, those resources would be very well served there. Uh, our emergency management, uh, I know they were just recognized last week, uh, here at the county and on the state level are coming up. Uh, they do a phenomenal, phenomenal job of the resources they have, they're running ragged, uh, you have pretty much two guys on the call twenty-four hours a day. Uh, we'd like to expand that out, uh, with two more civilians there to help the call burden there. Uh, they do so much that I don't have time to get into it here, but they're, they're so, so busy. Uh, then back to our, our, our power DMS is the, uh, the system we use for our training, uh, initiatives. Um, there's a lot of, uh, administrative tasks there that, that, we have one staff sergeant that coordinates all that, as well as our body camera program if it needs some help. And then the cold case unit, um, we've tried that for the last couple of years, we have so many cold cases, I think thirty to forty cold cases in the county. That, so we have some guys that are, as a kind of sort of a collateral duty, uh, with their normal investigative responsibilities. Uh, but we'd like to have two designated cold case detectives to work distance cold cases. Uh, Greenble County has a designated cold case unit, they've had tremendous success with theirs. Uh, and then the two S R O floaters, that's a little bit funny because of the, the funding's not necessarily by us, although it somewhat is because we have to provide vehicles and fringe. Uh, but the school districts, we're in conversations with them to try to add to, uh, if you know, we have forty S R Os in the county, every county school in the districts that we service has a school resource officer. But inevitably, somebody's on vacation, somebody's sick, um, and that forces our supervisory staff and the S R O division to, to service those schools as they can. Um, what we'd really like to do is, is have two additional floaters in that pool of forty deputies to be able to fill in. Um, and, and especially during the, during the times where somebody's sick with the flu or, or on vacation with a family. So, uh, we, we tried that, we looked at that over the last couple of years, but we're, we're trying to partner with the school districts to absorb some of that cost. All right, so here's the fun part. So the suggested and recommended general law enforcement officer, deputy staffing level is varied based on source. Uh, I looked into this and did a fair amount of research, it depends on the region you're in, so I kind of tried to focus around the southeastern United States in areas similar to ours. Um, that number can get up to two and a half in your urban areas, and it can get down to about one point five, no, really no lower than one point five in your rural areas. Uh, the number that I kept going back to was one point six, that was sort of the standard in areas like ours, uh, that's per one thousand residents. Those staffing needs are considered across all divisions where law enforcement serves, directly provided by our uniform patrol or S R O division. Um, our civil division, which they serve civil papers, uh, within the county for the courts and attorneys, our court security division, our criminal investigation division, our special investigations division, and there's other areas not mentioned. Uh, and also, when you think about adding staff, adding those frontline staff, a lot of times you don't think about the support roles also have to be increased. Not necessarily one for one, but for every X number of deputies you add, you got to think about those detention officers, um, that are serving our detention facility, as well as our communications personnel and administrative personnel. So the current population, on some, uh, data provided in the body county last week, uh, it looks like we're sitting at around two hundred and twelve, a little over two hundred and twelve thousand people. Our current law enforcement only staff, our class, what we call a class one law enforcement officer, we have two hundred and eighty-nine currently. Um, that puts our staffing ratio at about one point three five, which is below, obviously, that one point six ratio. But you can see, you don't think there's a big difference between one point three five and one point six, but that's fifty-two deputies. So if you were looking at on a one point six ratio, today we're fifty-two deputies short of where we should be for the population that we have in our county. So the county population is estimated to increase incrementally at a rate from about one point three two percent to one point four one percent from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-five. As you see, again, our current population is at two, a little over two hundred and twelve thousand. The estimated population of two, two thousand and thirty-five, according to the data I was provided, is a little over two hundred and forty-three thousand people. That means we need three hundred and eighty-nine deputies by two thousand and thirty-five in ten years, if you, if you're looking at that one point six ratio, which you correctly mentioned. If we added fifty-two deputies a day, we would need to add additional five deputies per year to account for that five, that ten-year growth from now until two thousand and thirty-five. Now the reality is we can't have fifty-two deputies, it just, it just can't happen. Uh, if we hire fifty-two today, the academy couldn't train them, we couldn't get them turned out, we don't have the training staff here to facilitate that. Uh, but what I will say is, in order just to pace growth that are recommending, that recommend one point six ratio, we would need to add five deputies per year over the next ten years, just to be where we are today in ten years. Um, in, in relation to the number of deputies to citizens. Outside of staffing, uh, we, uh, since I'm in my twenty-sixth year here, and we've always contracted our firearms training ranges, uh, there are private range here in town that we contract with, they've done a very good job, it's changed hands over the years with ownership. But, uh, they do a good job servicing us, but it has limitations. Uh, we're obviously sharing that with the public, there's scheduling issues, they only give us, uh, one or two days per week, we have to schedule all our training operations around that. And obviously, we, we're limited to how we can train, uh, in accordance with their, obviously, range rules, if we understand liability reasons. Looking at cost considerations, um, it's estimated that our base pay, which is part of the reason we're fully staffed, honestly, the support from our county, uh, it, it, we try to, we try to, we try to provide a good culture within the office, but the reality is you have to balance culture and pay. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of that, of being that we're fully staffed. But the estimated base pay of a deputy, uh, just a frontline, uncertified deputy, uh, is fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. If you adjust that for a uniform patrol, which means they work, uh, eighty-four point seven five hours per pay period and they work holidays, that rate gets up to around a little over fifty-eight thousand dollars per deputy. Uh, the actual cost of that, if you add in all the benefits with, uh, retirement, healthcare, that sort of thing, that's around seventy-seven thousand dollars per staff member. If we, if we're adding a position, another thing that's often not thought about is the equipment, uh, we have lined out in budgets to provide equipment for our deputies, but as you add a person and a C, obviously you have to increase those amounts of money as well. Uh, we, we normally estimate ten thousand dollars by the time you outfit a deputy with uniform, ballistic armor, uh, tasers, handguns, rifles, that sort of thing. So it gets to be around ten thousand dollars. Again, that's estimated, but, uh, you can get there really quick, as you've heard from other presenters, the cost of stuff going up. Uh, that vehicle, uh, cost is probably pretty low with outfit. Uh, we estimate that fifty-five thousand, uh, Mr. Stone will probably tell you this is a little bit more than that, depending on the vehicle, especially our K nine vehicles. Uh, but the outfits are very expensive, even on top of the cost of the car, which is also increasing. So by the time you add all that up, the fringe, the salary, the equipment, the vehicle, it's about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per staff to add, uh, additional staff. As far as the range goes, um, uh, we've had some conversations just casually, uh, over the last couple of years, um, county owns plenty of property, uh, with landfills and stuff like that, with, and, and, uh, curbs and you're already going to call it around there. We could utilize Anderson County equipment and staff, and again, unknown costs would include, you know, permitting, lab studies, used to studies, that sort of thing, that I'm not familiar with. That's all I ask. Happy to take some questions.
Preview of the budget.
Well, I think it's, it's certainly a high opening, what it, what it costs and what it's going to cost us to get there. Um, and I appreciate your, your presentation, taking into consideration the growth path that we're on, because we've got to figure out how to get there. And we know that we're going to continue to grow. Uh, each council member that we, there are seven of us, represents roughly thirty thousand people. This growth path that we're on is going to add another thirty thousand people to Anderson County. So I don't know, I don't know how we'll, we'll figure that as far as, but, you know, that's, that's a considerable amount of money that we're looking at. And, uh, again, I appreciate you, you and your staff and the sheriff and all that he's done, I know when he took office, deputy pay was abysmal.
It really was, I think, uh, I started in, uh, nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, I think, and again, you have to kind of reverse inflation, but I, I think I was making about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Which is way better than the, the small town I worked in for one year before that, I was making a hundred and eighty-six dollars a week. So I was putting that in the bank, found on the check register a couple of years ago, but look back at that. But, uh, our pay, again, is, 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 we've, I can't say enough of the support that we've had from y'all, uh, as far as, as I add our pay. Again, we try to have good culture, but you got to balance that culture and pay, you can have the best culture in the world, if you're not paying people, you're going to go somewhere else, so. Uh, and we're actually, and I'm not ashamed to say it, I don't care if it's listed, but we, we pull people from a lot of other agencies, include state agencies, so, uh, we're, we're very proud of that.
If, if you had to list one constraint that you have, this, what's number one?
Just the call volume, I mean, just the busy, this is, we're so busy, even like I said, with twenty, you have twenty working deputies on the shift before supervisors. Um, even with that amount of people, as you can see, they're running, you know, a hundred and eighty, two hundred calls a shift, a twelve-hour shift. Just with the, you know, the amount, even though we're fully staffed anymore, you know, I think we could have thirty deputies in the road on any shift and, and still be, uh, busy. But again, I, I, it's hard to complain about money, we're so, we're so well-supported, um, you know, we're, we're, I, we don't really have a whole lot of complaints, but the fear that I have is, is being where we are today ten years from now. And I think that's, and I applaud y'all for having a kind of a forward-looking approach, because I think what we can't do is, is, we got it under control now, but I don't know if it will in ten years. And we don't want anyone to get there, and I, I, I mentioned this the other day, talking to somebody, you're a fool to think that, that government will pay some progress, but I think we got to keep that, those lines as close as we can.
And I love their effort, uh, for the, 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 the mental health and wellness of, of your, of your officers. I mean, I think that's something I, I can't even fathom to think what they see and, and also our firefighters, some of the atrocities that they, they see. And mental health's a big, a big issue right now for, for all our first responders that, and, uh, Steve's already gone, but our EMS or, or workers. I mean, the, the things that you folks see out in the field, most people don't ever want to see. And I, I applaud you for that effort and, and if there's anything we can do to help with that, but yeah. So we know that the cars and trucks and vehicles cost a lot more than they used to. Uh, so, you know, we, I, I appreciate your presentation, and I know we got a lot of work ahead of us to try to get to that point to make sure that the citizens of Anderson County keep safe. I'll turn it over to my fellow council members if they have any comments or questions.
Well, it was really nice to have some money left over from that bond for just new vehicles with. And hopefully we'll be able to keep them rotating and keep it on a schedule. So, thank you for all you do.
Do you want to give a quick update on the jail, just so everybody here can hear?
Yeah, so, uh, it's coming along, if you've been by there, you can see, um, I actually missed a walkthrough, I had to, I had to go out of town last week, the, uh, the command staff, and I think some council members that walked through last week, or maybe last Thursday. Um, Captain Baker, uh, who's over our detention facility now, he's kind of filling two roles, he's, uh, he's, he's running our detention center. Um, then, if you've never been in there, I suggest or, or recommend it to, I don't recommend it to, I think everybody should do it, but nobody should have to. But if you've never been inside of it, it is, it's a high opening, um, again, they, they've polished that thing as much as they can polish it, um, and they've done, they've got as much mileage out of it as they can, so. it, they've got as much mileage out of it as they can, so. The new jail is going to be a game changer for us. Again, we're looking, I think I looked earlier today, I think we're at like four hundred and eighty-six people. If you're not aware, and I won't say it too loud, but the, the recommended or the, the limit there is about two hundred and something. We've been like a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety percent full for the last twenty years. Fortunately, our partners at state, now that we're building a jail, are working with us on that, so we've got some grace, but if we get any higher than that, you know, you have to contract out with surrounding detention facilities and that's, that comes at a cost, so. But as far as the new jail goes, I think they've been very lucky with weather, it looks like they're, they're really coming along with it. I'm not sure about the actual date of, of next year.
December, they're twenty-three percent complete as of today.
There you go. So I know they're working on it every day.
You sure it's not twenty-two point five? And, and this is no Taj Mahal that we're building, this is a functioning detention concrete.
Yeah, we try to make it, when we designed it, we tried to design it to be as, as staff efficient as possible.
And I was, I was sure to ask to the contractor last week, they bought the steel before the tariffs, so. So the steel was bought and on the ground, so we, we, you know, if they, if they hadn't taken those steps, it could have been a considerable increase in, in the construction, so I applaud our contractor and our county staff that's, that's working hard on making sure we have a facility that's safe for our employees and the, the folks that are unfortunate enough to be there awaiting trial.
I'd say it's adequate for them, safe for our staff, so that's all I can say.
This is kind of an off-the-wall question, what percentage, Mr. Brown, do you attribute the drug trafficking and drug addiction relation to crime that y'all have to deal with?
So the majority of my career's been in drug enforcement. Twenty-six years, I spent about eighteen years operationally in some, either, either local or federal drug enforcement. And I, I would say it's a significant percentage. I don't, I wouldn't know what exact number to put on that, but I, I used to dick around with people, I've never met a professional cat burglar, I mean, most people that break into houses, there's a reason to do that, so I've never met a jewel thief or an art thief, so most of it's, it's, it's still tough to pay for drugs, so. You know, again, I worked on it for twenty years, I like to think I made a difference, but I, I'm not sure. And I think again, I think it goes with just pacing, you know, pacing the problem. And I'm not sure we're doing it a little like if we did do a good job, but I think we, we work every day, our, our special investigations, our, our, our control units, they, they work every day with our federal partners, well, state partners, do, you know, local stuff, local impact stuff that you see in your community, you know, actually drug houses, drug use, but they also try to, to take the head off the stage as well, so I think there's, there's a lot to that.
That's right, I just want to say thank y'all for everything, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.